Under the Governor's Executive Order Number 5 issued on March 16th, this public meeting will be held via remote participation. Please note the agenda and supporting documents are on the Village website at www.homerlandil.org. This meeting is called the Order. Will we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And please remain standing for a moment of silence for those, for all those who are affected by the COVID-19 national pandemic. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, with which it stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Everyone's in. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Present.
Trustee Holtz?
I present the item.
Trustee Rogers?
Present.
Trustee Suisse? Trustee Suisse? Trustee Pazmino?
Present.
Trustee Cabrio?
Present.
Mary Vich.
Present. Want to try to share?
Yeah, I know she's on. Uh, Trustee Suisse? Start again.
I think it's her phone.
I don't think she has her phone.
All right, well, she will.
I think she's got it.
Trustee Suisse?
Present.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can hear now. Are there any amendments to this agenda? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd, 2019 Village Board meeting?
I so moved. This is Sharon, Trustee Suisse.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gray, any discussion? I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Alex Dean?
Aye.
Beth and Ann did they each other one?
I did aye.
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 Motion carries. Reports and communications from Mayor and other officers. This week, we are celebrating our local heroes. If anyone has a family member or friend that is serving in the front lines, they would like to celebrate, please send the information to A-B-L-A-N-K@homerlandil.org. We will give them a shout out and thank you on our Facebook page. We are also planning a food drive for our local pantry located in Lockport for April 27th through 30th. The Village will have a trailer in front of the Village Hall for the collection of non-perishable items. Please stop by and place your items in the trailer. This is a content with safe way to support our residents who may be in need. The Village will deliver the items to the food pantry on May 1st. Information of all of our outreach efforts and resources available to our business and residents can be found on our website at www.homerlandil.org. And I would like to put out a big thank you, and I'm sure the Board would go along with me on this, the entire medical field, doctors, nurses, maintenance crews that help out getting the hospitals cleaned up, our fire department, our police department, you know, all these people putting out their, you know, putting their lives on the line to help all of us. So I think it would be very good for everyone here to follow the rules that they have in CDC, so this way we can protect ourselves and everyone around us, and especially the people that are helping everyone that's sick. I would also like to thank all the people that are abiding by the social distancing for the safety of their lives and everyone that they are around. And if anyone knows of anyone in our village that might need some help because of COVID-19, please give us a call and we'll see what we can do to help them out. As I said, we'll go to trustees. So we'll start over with Trustee Pazmino. I have no report. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Trustee Cabrio?
I have no report. I will leave the fessing to Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Trustee Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm April and I am Governor Chris to recommend canceling summer events, concerts, and other large gatherings throughout the state. In light of that news, we scheduled and held a special meeting with the Homerfest Committee on April 14th to discuss the impact on our June event. Nine out of 10 of our voting members were able to attend either in person or via telephone, and we had many of our volunteers and supporters attend as well. After much discussion, we voted unanimously to recommend cancellation of the 2020 Homerfest. This was a brave decision not lightly taken by any of our committee members. There are many rumors and theories swirling online and in social media, and thankfully our committee was able to put much of that rhetoric aside and concentrate on the facts. In the end, the safety and well-being of our guests and our residents was our only priority. I'd like to thank and commend our committee members and supporters for all of their hard work and dedication to Homerfest and to our community. We have been working hard since the close of our last event. We know this decision will be a disappointment, but we cannot risk the health of our community. We look forward to bringing an amazing event in 2021. Stay healthy, stay safe and healthy, and we'll see you next year. Mayor, in addition to my report from Homerfest, I'd also just like to remind everybody that, um, you know, let's make sure during this time of isolation that we remember those who are suffering from depression, thoughts of suicide, emotional anxiety. Social distancing does not mean to be social despair. Be sure to reach out to those in your life and make sure that they're coping well. Remember, it's okay to not be, to not be okay. You know, it's okay to, to have someone to get to you, but you need to make sure that there are people in your lives that need help that they're getting it. So first responders, healthcare professionals, they're all facing daily challenges they probably never could have imagined. But even heroes need help, so let's make sure we reach out to everybody and let them know that they're valued and, uh, like you said earlier, you know, give us a call here at the Village if we can help out, we'll get people the resources that they need. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Uh, Trustee Holtz?
I'm, uh, thank you. Two things, they're not really, I don't know, that's how I put it. They're not typically diligently, oh, I missed one. Keith, I'm going to request again that you slow down. It's really hard to understand the people in the room, but you talk so fast, it's really hard to understand you, so if you could just slow down a little, thank you. Um, and then I just want to thank everyone for the well-wishes and the condolences regarding my other staff and the lovely plant arrangements. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness, so thank you all.
You're welcome. And is there anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Trustee Rogers?
No, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Trustee Suisse?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Reporting for the Environment Committee, today, March the 50th, anniversary of birthday. Although we cannot celebrate in person this year, we can still take sustainable actions at home that support the environment. Simple things like reducing the use of plastic bags, reducing food waste, or becoming more aware of your energy usage. We can also celebrate birthday by flooring the village trails or planting a tree. This Arbor Day is on Friday. In honor of birthday and Arbor Day, the Village is offering three different types of oak tree saplings, which are located near the community door with planting instructions for your convenience. It's no secret that trees help us feel better, both physically and emotionally, so pick up a few saplings for your yard. To celebrate Arbor Day, which is April 24th, the Homerland Environment Committee is sponsoring the Big Tree Champions Contest. We are asking residents to search for the biggest trees in the Village of Homerland. Nominations for every species of tree that exists are encouraged to be submitted. The application and more information is posted on the Village website. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Suisse. Village manager or village clerk?
Just a quick reminder to all the trustees, if you would like your report submitted into the minutes, please email me directly after the meeting. Thank you.
Village attorney?
No reporter on.
Thank you. Public safety official?
Just real quick, sir. I wanted to, uh, thank the Board, thank the community for your support of the front, those serving on the front lines. Um, and I want to give a shout out to John and the EMA guys, because anytime we call them, they're there for us too. Uh, but thank you. I think it's, it's great to work hand in hand with you, and we feel the support of everybody, be it the Board, the community, Village staff, and everybody. Um, just sort of want to remind the public as well, it's getting warm out, so we, we're going to see an uptick in, uh, people checking for unlocked doors. So make sure your stuff is all locked. Um, want to remind the community, if you see something, say something. Call it in. Don't tell us the next day. Thanks to a resident calling in suspicious activity, we got on it right away and we're able to catch a car. Uh, I want to say a car burglar, yeah, a car burglar, not a car thief, but a car burglar. So anyway, we got to work hand in hand with this stuff. Anything suspicious out of the norm, don't be afraid to call us. And thanks, everybody, for your support.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Village manager?
Mr. Mayor and the Board, based on the feedback that we received from you at the last board meeting, we have some signs that are here tonight that I'm going to ask Trustee Gray to hold up, since Trustee Gray was the one who helped us design them, so I want to say thank you, Trustee Gray, for that. So we have the one that says, "We are in this together, be safe, be kind, hang tough, Homerland." And then we also have the ones that says, "Not more than ever, support our Homerland businesses." We received the shipment of these signs today, and they are going to be available for both our residents and our businesses as well. We're going to have them available to pick up here. If we have businesses who want to get some, they have, um, put in front of their businesses, we will actually, they can just email us or call us, and we'll actually deliver those. For the residents, we'll post, um, the signs in front of every neighborhood, the hang tough signs. And then if there are residents who want to pick them up, we'll have them available outside during normal business hours for them to pick those up as well. So we'll be putting some social media posts out tomorrow as well, with the pictures of the signs as well.
Thank you. Next would be public comment. Please, no, sir. Next would be consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered regime by the Village Board and will be enacted by one motion. It's our motion to approve the following items. One, the accounts payable for the period of April 10th, 2020 through April 23rd, 2020, the amount of $484,585.99. And the treasurer's report of cash investments for the period ending March 31st, 2020. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay. Trustee Gray, Trustee Cabrio? Any discussion? Motion carries. Legislation in action?
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Cabrio?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Motion carries. Arbor Day proclamation, is there a motion to approve the attached proclamation declaring April 24th, 2020 is Arbor Day in the Village of Homerland?
I so moved, and Trustee Suisse?
All right, let me read this, and we can vote on it.
Give me a second.
Hang a second.
Okay. Proclamation declaring April 24th, 2020 is Arbor Day in the Village of Homerland. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and where the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and where trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide the habitat for wildlife, and where trees are the renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in the Village increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of businesses and areas, and beautify our community. And trees wherever are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I, Mayor George Uke, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2020 is Arbor Day in the Village of Homerland, and do hereby urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and to plant and care for trees to promote the well-being of this in future generations. Approve this 22nd day of April, 2020. Now is there any? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Cabrio?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-0011, an ordinance granting a variance to rinse fire cement siding on the first floor of the dwelling to move the exterior construction standards requiring that stone or brick material cover 100% of the averaging sole area of all first floor or story exterior walls exclusive of doors, windows, and associated trim 75-67A applicability and scope type of building or structure of Chapter 75 buildings of the code of the Village of Homerland for certain real property located in the R2 Single Family Residential District at 14717 South Hawthorne Court, Homerland, Illinois.
I so moved.
Mayor, second?
Second.
Cabrio, Pazmino, discussion? Do we have the homeowners here? Okay. Uh, does anyone have questions?
Is that a sample you have there next to the podium?
It is.
If you hold that up for us, please. Is that what you're proposing, put it on, what, on the three feet, below three feet?
This is going to be, uh, approximately three feet tall across the majority in front of the home. Um, and then it does step down just because of the grading of the property, um, between 16 to 18 inches on the north side and then the south side, which is the ground side.
And is the fireplace applied to it too? Do I mark the rim?
The fireplace itself, the fireplace itself is located or in the center of the house, so the only, the only portion of the fireplace you see is the chimney protruding through the center of the roof, and that is going to be also applied in stone.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
No.
Trustee Cabrio?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Board. Number three, is there a motion to approve ordinance 20-011, an ordinance approving a site plan amendment for the proposed parking lot improvements, Aquapool's located in the C4 Highway Commercial District at 13445 West 159th Street, Homerland, Illinois, Aquapool's case number HG-1835SP. Do I have a motion?
No.
Who was that?
Dr. Trustee Holtz, motion here.
I'll say.
Uh, discussion?
Um, I'd like to start off.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead. Is that Anna?
Go ahead.
It's your motion. Go ahead, Anna.
I, I'm just going to say that I will probably put it out before, so go ahead.
Well, I'd like to know what the, uh, what the hardship is on the, on the turning radius for trucks in the, uh, in the parking lot. Is that, is that something that's changed since 2018 when we first initially approved this?
Actually, what happened was the original plans, because it is an existing parking lot, this is not a parking lot.
Correct.
All right? There were never planters in there. And due to circumstances with the Village where I had different engineers to complete the project, they, uh, George Stoughton inadvertently put that on the plan that I was not aware of, of parking, the parking planters. And I was shocked when I found out from, we turned in an application to put a display pool in, I was talking to the Village about doing that, and doing the landscaping in front of the building, and they said, "We haven't addressed the, the, uh, the landscaping, the planters." And I said, "What planters?" I had never planned on it, they were not supposed to be there, they were not there when, for the last three years. So, uh, also, it would make it difficult to snowplow there, it's kind of narrow, they've taken so much of the property and they had to have an exit to go out on the east side of the property, it would all be difficult. The planters would just really encumber the turning of cars, trucks, everything.
So when you had proposed the addition on the back of the building in 2018 of the storage structure, is that what triggered making the rest of it come into compliance? Is that BJ or Joe? Is that why, is that why they stopped architect or draw, uh, engineer or whatever, put the landscape planters on there?
They have site and landscaping planned.
So really, even if he had been aware of it in 2018, it would have been an issue, he would have been able to leave the variance over there in 2018. So it's now just an oversight, it would have been, still had, we would have still had voted on either giving the variance or not. That's correct.
I just want to point out one item, uh, they're taking out one of the three handicaps spaces, and that's controlled by ADA, we cannot approve that one, so they need to put back the third handicap stop, because they got over 50 parking spaces.
We'll do that. Yeah, while I understand there's, there's a lot to do with 2018 when I was on the board, um, you know, that we're supposed to be done, are still not done, sign included, I know that's not, this is not what it sort of encompasses everything, um, I just don't like the, I can't do any of it versus let's compromise and do some of it. That's my only, I, I really, we need to get to a certain compromise amongst us as a Board and a Village. It is a beautiful piece of property on 159th Street, we, it sets a precedent, and I don't want, I want to make sure that we're setting the right precedent. I'm not using you as that precedent, but unfortunately, we've been asking for this. Well, but I agree with, uh, Trustee Cabrio. The precedent is our code says that, you know, you need, uh, these, these landscape islands at the end of a parking aisle, and that's why your engineer or architect put them in there, um, you know, according to our code. Now again, to, to Trustee Cabrio's point, if you had come in and said, you know, "I've got a dock door there and I can't swing an 18-wheeler, can I lose one of them?", there's probably a lot more, there'd be less resistance on our part to say, "Yeah, you know, sure, show us the schematics, show us the turn radius and everything," but just, uh, wait until the very end and then come in and say, "I'm not going to do any of these."
Well, actually, this isn't the very end, if you look at the drawings that were turned in when the building was originally, uh, uh, applied for, there are no parking planters on that, and it's an existing parking lot, it was there, it's not new, it's the same parking lot.
So once you have worked with the property and you put on that big addition, you have to address the property into compliance.
So.
So that trigger of bringing all of it into compliance, that's why your engineer or architect put those on there, he knew that the restrictions and that the, uh, the regulations were that everything had to come into compliance now. So that's why they're on there, and I believe that I was looking at it earlier, the plan for 2018, and they are now.
Well, in fact, you're not, you have a plan.
Well, I have a very low red printout, it's eight and a half by 11, I can see them very.
You see parking lot, you don't see parking planters. I said, I don't have.
When you look up at a landscape parking, uh, uh, island, typical. Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah.
That's correct.
They were, they were included in the.
They're all annotated to say typical landscape island, curved landscape island. All of them are, there's some of them, I believe. So may I interject? I, I see a picture here. Are those half-moon, um, end caps, are those landscape, are those just painting? What are they?
Propose, I think your, uh, your honorable trustees and, uh, and Mayor, uh, and Engineer for the project that, uh, that goes on there.
Okay.
Um, they were previously, you know, on previous drawings that were submitted as well, I just wanted to make one point to clarify, the turning radiuses in there are adequate for fire trucks, but they're not adequate and the, and the function is not adequate for semi-trailer. Uh, this function that he asked here would be after hours, so during the day, he wouldn't adequately be able to, to park vehicles, but it would be inadequate for him to be able to maneuver, uh, 18-wheeler semi-trailer trailers, which he has deliveries after hours, and those islands would interfere with that process. And that's a reason why, I, I think Jim is trying to articulate, uh, you know, the, the precedence that, that, uh, that is earlier. There's also a communication with I.D.A., that indicated that they were not recommending the return of islands for lighting to any of the islands that were located within easement areas, which are out in Concord where its home store is located. So Jim has just found, wrote about it, he was more or less told to follow on the advice of, uh, on the advice of others.
On the advice of I.D.A.? I.D.A. 670? I.D.A. 670, which all the way back to the end of that property?
On the advice of his attorney, after communication with I.D.A. Anything he would put in that would be at risk, if he was to have an island to work, a streetlight, work on it for that streetlight, uh, a sprinkler system, any of that would be at risk if there was ever a break or something like that, he would be responsible for that repair.
In the easement of 159th Street?
No, there's a 40-foot easement that cuts the property in half.
Well, that's where we approved, uh, building a building on top of.
No, sir, no, sir, that is not an easement. The building was built on top of my property, which is a privately owned pipe. Dan is referring to where the parking lot is now, the area you're looking at in the center, that's a 40-foot easement that belongs, that stated online controls.
So you're telling me that the easement that I see the two end caps on is a 40-foot easement that you have no control over, and if something were to break underground, they would be able to disrupt that?
That's correct.
That is correct.
The parking, where's the easement? I'm guessing between the two. Again, I, I really have, I have empathy for the fact that, you know, I'm analyzing you and the fact that you need semi-trailers to turn and do things they need to do. I just don't want this to be a blanket, I don't have to do anything anymore, and I'm free and clear. I, I'm sympathetic, but yet I have issues if I want to see a sign that's complete. I drive by it every day, I live on 159th Street, I know that's a selfish thing to say, but it's a true thing to say. I think it's a great business, I want to continue to have your business in Homerland, but I really feel that there's some aesthetics that need to be addressed. My personal feeling.
I'd like to make a couple comments to Trustee Holtz. So I feel that the businesses on 159th have been subjected to, um, huge, um, impact, negative impact from the construction project, um, number one. Number two, um, this is an existing business, it's a long time business, and I tend to stand Carlos' point, Judge Cabrio, sorry, um, with regard to new development, um, but I do feel that there should be some sort of grandfather law applied to this particular situation, especially when you factor in the easement runs through the middle of the parking lot. And then, um, lastly, I don't see, um, uniform standards being applied to existing properties that have landscape islands, for example, the Jewel Plaza, for example, the Meyer Plaza. They're not maintained, so I just probably want to encourage stuff, but what's the point if they're not to be maintained by the property owner, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So in this particular situation, given that possible, uh, property has been a long-term and successful business and a great asset to our community, I think there are several, um, reasons why it's hard to reply here and, um, support for granting this amendment. Thank you.
Jim?
I would just say that, um, I, I would, this is Trustee Rogers, I'd say that I agree with, um, Trustee Cabrio and Trustee Gray. This is, you know, something that for two years has never brought, never addressed. This snowplow comment is, is not going to, you know, doesn't weigh too much on me, because there's, I've, I've been in that world, so that doesn't really weigh anything on me, but I would just.
But I would just say that I agree with trustee Gray and trustee Gabrielle.
Trustee Suisse, have you?
I have no further comments.
Okay. Jim, there's, they're showing two, they're showing three islands, actually four or five if you go into the back corners. And you're talking, you can't get a semi in there in the daytime. Daytime would be a little bit easier, but which driveway are you talking about the trucks coming in? I've got a screen in front of me. I don't think he's got a screen in front of him.
He deals with this one? He should deal with this.
He has a printout.
All right. Where it says 267.66 feet. If you go straight down, you've got, we'll call them a relative, that's what it looks like right now. So you have a relative east side, you have an approach to the west side. Where does it, where would the semi be coming through?
Basically, the traffic flow generally was set up to where the trucks would come in from the main entrance. And they would go to the rear of the building, to the loading dock in the back, at which time they would have to exit and then make their way around the one or the two driveways to, if they're going to go to the east, they could go out the same entrance. But I really would prefer to have the truck traffic exit the property next door that might be annexed and put a cross axle easement in so the trucks could exit there. Guess you'd have to come and see the trucks pulling in driveway.
Well, all right. So looking at the big picture with the additional part of the next parcel, where you have the driveway going out to the streets and this will be there in the east side of the property. That's not big enough for a semi to pull in and make a turn going out to the second or coming into the first and going out east?
I'm not understanding the question. Repeat on it.
You've got the entrance in the middle of the property that comes in. Then you've got the street that goes across, well, you have a parking lot that goes across and then goes into that other side where you've got a turn coming in.
Okay.
All right. So a truck will have to go back down the building in order to unload?
It would.
Right, it's coming down there.
This is, this is again where I think the engineer would be the key to this, to knowing what the turn radiuses are of a standard 18-wheeler and which way would be the best way to track first in and out. Lay that down and be prepared to send with your parking around that. I mean, you haven't straightened anything at this point anyhow. She still has the flexibility to make the lane where you need to make lanes. I understand now the sensitivity to the I.D.A. easement. We were not, that's not part of Mr. Greco's letter, I don't believe. It's not really him. It's kind of vaguely referred to. If you can't build something there because of, you know, future access, then we just need to be made aware of that and then, you know, make sure that we'll work with you to try to ease this burden as much as possible. But I think to go from a plan that we had approved in 2018, that everybody in this room said, yes, we're okay with that, that showed all of these things, and now to come up two years later and just say, we're not doing any of these. We're, I'm no engineer. I don't know what truck turning radius is. So I can't, I don't know what your preferred traffic pattern will be on your piece of property. You know where you take your deliveries in. You guys need to map that out and then put your parking around that and then see if you can fit some of these traffic, or these landscape islands in. I think we're going, I think we're going too far here right now, you know, to go from everything to nothing.
Well, let me.
It's not going to be nothing.
Let me tell you one thing real quick. The 24-foot entryway down the middle of that property, I get it. That's our ingress. If we could just do something with the islands, whatever you want to call those, curbs, islands, landscape, fronting 159th Street, that back one on the 40-foot easement, at the end of the day, I get it. You need the access. You need the ingress secret. No problem might be on the ingress secret. At the back of that property, I don't want to say I'll give you anything you want, but I'd be happy to just, I'd be happy to accommodate whatever we need to accommodate. But to just say, I'm not going to do anything, I'm not pleased with that. I'd still like the sign to look better. I'd still, you can keep the same sign.
For what it's worth, the brick is next to the sign right now. It's going to be done this week.
Okay, yeah. But you know, I was about to.
By the way, I'd like to note that there is a temporary easement there and the state of Illinois is still not done with the front of the store.
I'm not picking on that. I'm just, I'm being honest with you. I just, I travel. I see it. You know, if you had to get trucks in and out of there and just landscape just the front, I, when I say landscape, I mean nothing more than rocks and a couple shrubs.
You know, do you have any other landscape plan that we propose?
Not with me.
Because, I mean.
BJ, you have.
If you guys go back five years ago, if you remember, the front of the store was all landscaped. There were sprinklers, there was trees, there was bushes, there was rocks. It looked beautiful. The state ripped everything up there, so, and I've been dealing with that for five years, so.
I've been here 21 years. I've seen it every single day. I don't, I just, I want to make sure we're making the right decisions to move forward. Now that 159th Street is a highway.
Can I chime in? Can I chime in for just a second? I know I usually speak when spoken to. I'm the engineer. The question was asked, what's the turning radius for a truck? The minimum turning radius is 42 feet. You actually would actually disrupt all of the aisle spaces. You essentially wouldn't have a parking lot if you were to try to redesign it with bumper radiuses. The reason, this is the reason why you have that ability. If there's nobody front there to stop for hours, someone could pull in and pull it straight to that next to the one-story metal shed. It becomes an issue that starts the turning radius to be more of a turn versus not getting a functional parking lot at all.
Are these, are these islands too large? Can we reduce those?
No, that's a hard point. You wouldn't have a functional parking. You'd have only parking out the next to the building and along the byway. You wouldn't have any center parking at all.
Okay, in order to make a full turning radius for a truck. But I mean, you know, just so that they can get in and out safely and make their delivery. There has to be a way for them to get onto the truck, they can come in the main entrance head side.
Once they come in.
Once in what?
You know, do we risk that back up against the windows? But the problem is getting on 159th Street to where that blue entrance is next to the one-story metal shed.
The truck traffic also, there is an entrance if you go to the east and trucks that are headed westbound, they would turn and hit. It's not like they would all just come in one entrance and go out. The trucks kind of go how they want to go. They'll come in the entrance that we see here, but if you go this entrance here, but if you go to the east, there's another entrance. They want the lot next door so it can have an entrance, they have access going both ways. Well, the trucks will come in and do it. They're not going to go down the car to road and make a U-turn to come down. It's easy to turn in the entryway that I provided there.
I could attest to that. I mean, given the space that I'm in, those trucks, I mean, I can just see them running over these islands and just destroying them. The middle of these islands, are they going to have some sort of shrubbery or grass in the middle? Or landscape?
There's some landscape.
They're going to run all over them if you.
Look, I don't disagree.
We have five miles of 159th Street which are coming up to be developed right now. We have Shorewood Auto, which is currently, you know, a building. We have the gas and wash coming. We have the sit over by Twin Lakes that just finished up. We have many developments out there and they all have, they all have deliveries. They all are getting over this somehow.
But they're all not all brand new?
No, that's correct. But he's in existing, like he said before. And he's making the parking lot nicer and better. I mean. I'm not discrediting the fact that the parking lot looks great and it looks great with paved and everything. What I'm saying is that there has to be something between seven parking islands and none. I can't imagine that Mr. Greco is taking counsel to pay for it. And the only thing you can come up with is that we cannot accommodate anything. That the only, the only point of compromise here is all or nothing. And again, you know, we can vote on this, but it doesn't sound like there's great enthusiasm for it. So it's either going to, in my eyes, it looks like it's headed for failure or we table it if it goes back for, you know, another look. That's, that's where it looks like.
I just want to point to a couple things about, really, and I went on a board in 2018, number one. But we didn't all vote that. Number two, Apple's is their long-term business and they decided to stay here and reinvest in the business here and double the capacity of the building space and expand the business instead of leaving and voting for another community. And I think, given the long-term history of that and the site standards restrictions and the fact that the warehouse is in the back there, that these are combinations that we can make to a loyal business in town. And considering the negative impact that 159th Street's construction projects have had, you know, this is an existing business. I hold against the desire for new construction and wanting these aesthetically pleasing landscapes. But it just doesn't make sense for this particular property. And I said, it's like somebody who has knowledge of that, that's where they are existing in the village. They're not being maintained. So I know why we're ignoring that now.
And I'll just, I'll respond to Carlos' here. I agree. I have many friends who shop at this business. I know this business for a long time. I am just, I am in concurrence with trustee Gray in the sense that I just want to see some accommodations, not all. And I'd be perfectly fine with it. There's got to be an amenable way to do this. Do it intelligently, do it architecturally without costing a lot of money, but yet do it with good aesthetics. That's all I'm looking for. I'm not asking for the world. I'm asking for a happy compromise.
Can we be specific? Those are what we'd like to see?
I already said the frontage on 159th Street, I'd like that to just have a different appearance. Better, worse, my better, your worse, your better, my worse are different. I think there was commitments made in 18 that I think need to be taken care of. Agreed that new businesses we're going to have stricter rules on. But a longstanding business, I think we owe it to them to give them some opportunity to at least be semi-compliant, but yet fruitful and successful. So, you know, there's got to be a way, the engineer, I think was online, attorney.
Dan, yes.
There's got to be a way to make those islands a little different in the front. Plant something there. It doesn't have to be, no disrespect sharing. Doesn't have to be trees or bushes. It can be, you know, rock makes a pretty picture. You know, just some things that even if they run it over, it's not going to be, you're not going to, you're not going to fix old habits by just continually saying, well, trucks are used to going there for 35 years. I'm sorry, truck drivers change, you know? We can say that about Gouda Road. I've been here about Gouda Road for the last 100 years. I'm done with Gouda Road. Trucks go down there one way or another, you know? You can't change bad habits, you know? I proposed that when 159th Street got built, we were going to have semis barreling down 159th Street when we wanted the gas station. Everyone said, no, even, I'm sorry, I want 159th Street every day. There's trucks barreling down 159th Street every single day. So I just want a happy compromise and I'd be happy to help. Jim, you have, by the picture I'm looking at right now, you have five islands that you're going to be putting in. Two in the front that look like the umbrella, one in the back, and then two on the side. Then you have your sign up in the very front. The sign is what you were going to be putting, the brick around it. And that's where it was a flop. It was moved back because it was.
It was a fake.
Right.
George, if I can interrupt you for one second. Mr. Iger, those umbrella things that George is referring to, those are not islands, correct? Those are striped, is that striped pavement? It's just.
Well, then the islands, the piece that's under that's black and white with the stripes in it?
That's what was proposed in 2018.
Just a quick.
All right. So what you're looking for right now is you want one of those removed or two of them removed. There's no way that the whole thing would have to go away in the first place. To, because Keith, you keep saying that from all to nothing.
Well, Mr. Greco's letter says that he'd like to do away with all of the, all of the landscape islands and propose just paint striking on pavement where you see red lines right now. Is that correct, Mr. Greco?
That is correct.
So where you see red lines on today's drawing would just be paint on pavement. Where you see black lines that show a shape of an island, there are seven of them. Those would all be deleted. So that's all to nothing. We had seven islands. Now they're proposing taking out all seven and coming in with five painted areas.
All right. So you're talking two in front of the building, which wouldn't have to be changed at all, which are, so we're both on the same page. Then next to the driveway, you have another one. At the end of the driveway, you have another one. So it's on both sides of what the signs are right now. And then you have one all the way down at the bottom of the double one or the warmer one. Then you have one at the east side. And those aren't going to be landscaped. Are those going to be lights?
No, it's painted.
No, 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 no. The window is.
Yeah, it's gone to, they're talking about giving it all.
All right. All right. So, Mr. Greco, why would they have to eliminate all of them to accommodate what Jim's trying to do?
Be loud.
Releasing it?
I mean, originally, there was a request not to put any islands in. Jim, originally, he had the site plan as is. It was on form of the 2018 decision to install the islands. I've listed the hardships that apply to the I.D.A. and truck movement for the center island. But you are correct, there could be, there could be a window of opportunity for islands maybe to get up, located to the part of east where the existing wet hole is located right now. And the two triangular shaped areas that are under the one-story metal shed. And thus, Jim has a specific objection to that. I think you could maintain forward that center area alone, lane should be kept, should be kept open.
So the 40-foot easement, the 40-foot easement you're saying should be kept open and no islands, just striped? I'm just trying to clarify this. And then the one-story metal shed, excuse me, to the east most portion of the property, you could do something there and you could do something straight north of that. Yeah, I get it that that's, the 24-foot road, I mean, and I'm sorry, I'll move it over this quickly. If we, if those are just striped, I mean, why can't we just reduce these islands? I still don't hear an answer to that. Well, and I thought the island was going to be around the sign, so that would eliminate all the graphics there. Yep. So.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, it's trustee Rogers. And this goes back to the conversation that I had with Jeff a little bit this week. And, you know, I would say exactly what Carlos was saying. There's got to be somewhere in the middle that we can make here. You know, we approved this in 2018. It was signed in 2018. Almost two years later, it's not okay. I had suggested tabling it so that we could tweak it. The petitioner wanted a vote tonight. So I think that we just need to vote because this is what's on the table. There's so many different plans going back and forth. Oh, we can do this or we can do that. It's going to get confused again. There needs to be a vote or a table and we need to move on.
This is trustee Suisse. I agree with you, trustee Rogers, because they could say they want to do this, they want to do that. It's either table, you come back and show us exactly, because it's too mixed in. Or we vote. Vote it. You vote it and let them come back with a new plan. Or tweak it to the point where we could actually see and it's in print what they're promised to do.
And I kind of agree with you too. I don't know, you know, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing where some of them are and as for the painting on the thing. Jim, I think the best thing that we could do here tonight, right now, is to table it. Let's find out exactly what has to go through and what doesn't. Looking at the property up in the front, that's in front of your building, you have two parcels and that's going to be landscaping. What's going to be right in front of the store?
There's an old landscape plan that.
Wait, wait, wait. Let me finish what I'm talking about. The property in front of your existing store.
Yes.
Where the dots are and the, so that's all landscaping up there?
That will be landscaping, but unfortunately, I.D.A. has not completed the drains there. Joe, I think I showed you. They put the sewers. There's a sidewalk. Here's the sidewalk people walk on. The drain is down 18 inches. They have to change that. So I can't really do much in that area.
Okay.
And that goes around the whole front of the property. They are supposed to, you know, fix that. They are supposed to, you know, fix that, but they haven't.
My thought here is, so you have those two parcels. If you eliminate the ones that are inside the parking lot, right off of 159th Street, where you have a fairly large one, it's underneath the first umbrella. And then you have the umbrella next to the other one, there's nothing behind it. If you did the one in front of the building to the west, you did the one to the east, you did the one on the east side of the property itself, that's still a fairly big piece of property. Because, see all these pictures, if you're looking at all of them, they're different.
They're distorted.
So, we can, we can get into where, and then you've got some far in the back on the east side. And you've got one that's, again, further in the back, on the west side of the back end of the property. So you could actually have six of them in here if we eliminated the first, the front two, which that seems to be the area where you can't get the trucks in and the truck back out. You still have landscaping in front, so that's, because the landscaping that goes all the way to back, that's not going to benefit anyone. No one's going to see it except if people go over to the parking lot. So, let's.
He still will need a variance though, because our code calls for landscape islands at the end of a parking aisle. So that's the reason in 2018, your architect or engineer drew those in there, was bringing in compliance. And again, to Trustee Holt's point about, you know, I get it, you're a long-time business here and we do appreciate that. There's nobody beating you up on this board. We approved the plan in 2018. I do know that two trustees were not here in 2018. But it's not that we're imposing this upon you. When you put on that addition onto your business in 2018, you triggered this. You triggered having to come into compliance. It has nothing to do with the fact that you've been here for a long time. It was that. Nobody was going to impose that upon you if you had to put that addition on the back of your building. That's what triggered this. So, all I'm saying is that I looked at this in 2018 with the addition and knowing that, okay, you have to come into compliance and everything looks like it's all buttoned up, staff did their job. Your architect or landscape, or architect or engineer did his job or her job. And everything was great. And now we're coming in, we're finding out that, hey, wait, this doesn't work. Okay, well, I'm sorry. I relied on the good professional advice of architects, engineers, and staff in 2018 when I made that decision. I now need to have good professional advice of architects, engineers, and staff to show me it doesn't work. You need to, you need to be flexible, Trustee Gray, and move some of these islands around and give them a variance in order to make this piece of property work. And I'm not seeing that right here. All I'm seeing, all I'm hearing is that truckers want to do whatever they want to do and we need to scotch all of these landscape islands. And it's like, wait, there's got to be something between those two points. That's, that's all I'm saying.
That's why I'm suggesting, make this easy. Let's table it. Let's, let staff and us work on this with.
Can I, can I speak for a second?
Yes.
I need to motion. I would like to know from the petitioner, Mr. Iler, would you like us to table it or would you like to vote?
I'd like to take a vote.
Okay, well, then I'm not going to motion to table and I'm not going to present my motion.
Okay, this, well, there's other comments, so we have to put a vote, cover it up.
Trustee Suisse?
No.
Trustee Cabrio?
No.
Trustee Pasmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
No.
Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
No.
Okay, the noes have it. So, right now, it's in limbo.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-012, an ordinance mandating 83-68 of the code of the village of former Glen, increasing the number of Class Q license, liquor licenses issued within a village of former Glen. It is understood that the number of Class Q liquor licenses retirement facility will increase by 1. As a move? Trustee Cabrio?
I'm second. I'm second.
Trustee Rogers? Is there a discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cabrio?
Aye.
Trustee Pasmino?
I abstain, conflict of interest.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 20-013, an ordinance assigning an available Class Q liquor license retirement facility to Franciscan Communities, Inc., DBA Marion Village, located at 15624 Marion Drive, former Glen, Illinois? As a move again? Trustee Cabrio?
I'm second.
Trustee Rogers? Discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Pasmino?
Abstain.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Cabrio?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, is there a motion to cancel the 2020 Horror Fest event? Some of. Trustee Gray?
Ah, second.
Trustee Cabrio? Is there any other discussion?
Only that, Trustee Gray has already expressed the facts and we're upset about canceling and we will renew ourselves in 2021.
And it'll be better, so much better. I'm sorry, there was somebody else.
I will say, I will say, Mayor, that my husband and I have the opportunity to drop off, hand them a package to the fire department. And I spoke with the fire department a bit about this. And, you know, they have great concerns about this as well. They don't know what any of us do, if they won't be able to support us. Because right now, their focus is on caring for these, you know, virus victims. And then not only that, once their staff, their people are exposed to it, then they're in quarantine for 14 days afterward. So they don't have the confidence to know that they can support us with this and we would definitely need that. Along with that, I would say that the Horror Fest relies so much on our volunteers. I myself know that I was there every single day volunteering. I would not be there this year volunteering. I'm not going to put myself and my family at risk for that. I'm following the scientists, I'm looking at what I'm seeing. And there's just so much unknown. And to commit to contract and, you know, deposit the fireworks people, they could potentially not even exist then, because I'm assuming, again, I'm assuming that there's a lot of towns that are going to be canceling these fireworks. So, they could just not even be ordering stock or doing any of this stuff. And the carnivals, those people have to be getting huge cancellations as well. And to bring people together is, I'm not even, I'm not even speaking to that. I'm just talking about the fact that the staff and the support that we need to manage this stuff, it's just not going to be there. Not only that, the extent, you know, there's going to be people who, you know, actually know there's more people unemployment right now than ever. And are they going to have that total income to pay for these tickets and to do this? You know, I just think it's prudent for us to put it on pause and come back in 2021 figure and better than what we had planned for 2020.
Yeah, and I just want to add one more thing. I bet, this is Carlo, I appreciate your thoughts and I'm sure Trustee Gary would agree. We always consider this fest as self-funding to a certain extent. And we definitely do not want to put on an event that we are costing the taxpayers money with no expected generated revenue. I understand people would want to get out and have a good time and socialize even at a social distance. However, it is imperative to understand that that's almost impossible in a festival environment. So, I totally agree with you. I appreciate your comments. And I never even, and I should have, I shouldn't say never. Never thought about the first responders who may not be there and be available for us had we needed them for an emergency because of this pandemic. So, very good thoughts, thank you.
After we discussed this in the meeting with the fire department, with EMA, with the island department, with the police department, and we had one person go out in the meeting that should be at Disneyland closed up. Disneyland closed up. Everyone else shouldn't be doing anything either. Because the way it is right now, the carnival company has had nothing but cancellations. I don't even know if he has any reservations right now for anyone. Lockport stepped back, we've stepped back. So, and he informed one of the committee members from the parade and festival that they can't do anything until Disneyland opens up in the first place. And right now, they don't plan on doing that for a little while. So, we took into all that consideration. The same thing with all the vendors, because there's someone to be there. And just for me, myself, I would never take a chance of throwing someone under a bus by having a festival without knowing what's going to turn out in the next few months with this COVID-19. There's still people dying. There's still millions and millions and millions of people that have never been tested. So this still could blow up a hell of a lot bigger than what it is right now. And I think they did the right thing by, and I also agree with the Horror Fest not going through this year. We can wait till 2021 and hopefully by that time, we are all safe, we can get everyone together and no one will feel uncomfortable by coming to this. So, with that.
I agree.
Wait, Mayor, Mayor, can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Out of respect for the public safety committee, I know that you all have not been able to meet on this and have a consensus on this. So I just want to put it out there that I do emphasize with you, you know, these are just really weird times and I'm sure this is something that you all would have on your agenda to discuss. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, as far as the public safety committee, I would just like to try and, I did talk to the fire team last night at Lynn's. I was already leading to the, any reasonable cancellation strictly from a logistical standpoint. Having been on the committee for four years and understanding the logistical complications and monitoring complications of the pony, because we looked at this issue strictly from a weather standpoint, never making, you know, from a health standpoint. So, given the current situation and the foreseeable future of loans, you factor in all of that and then you factor in the fire district position, I absolutely think that canceling is the right thing to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Cabrio?
Aye.
Trustee Pasmino?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to accept the visitor's from the Kenneth Company for the design, procurement, and installation of playground equipment at Glenview Park in the not to exceed amount of $199,999? Some of.
Some of.
Trustee Gray, Trustee Rogers, discussion.
I would just like to say, you know, I'm going to reiterate what you all are saying in front of you. This went out to, to the trustees and to the residents of Glenview Park with double option and there was a tiebreaker. So we decided to put the tiebreaker back out again and Ruben Chauvin, that's his client. I know he was part of this, but, so we put the, put it back out again and this design came in, you know, kind of, it kind of was way ahead of the other. I think what's really close this design in front of any other park that you probably see anywhere is that design. And it's hard to see from the, from the drawing, but there's a design that goes across there. And I think that's just really going to make this, you know, something really unique in Horrorland that people are going to like. One of the things that definitely I talked about, potentially taking away some of these smaller things that you see here, there's that little circle thing you see there, like a ring circle. And then over on the right, that, that we now are looking, kind of, I think it's more like a Peter Todd or something, to take those away for that we could offset the cost of putting some shelter in there and then still coming in and what's just unacceptable. But I think that's the one thing that was really unique in Horrorland. I'm not a fan of putting in a water fountain. Because as the parks committee will tell you, we have a water fountain, water fountain in our parks. And based on some of the feedback that we got from residents, they don't want it like there either. So, that's something that I don't think we need to do. But I think it's going to be a unique park. And I reached out to the parks committee and asked them to come up with a name. And I'm asking you all to, you know, think about a name as well. Something different besides just naming on the park after some division that goes into. So, just something to think about, this time to work on it and to begin with. I think that this is the park that the residents here are going to be proud of and the residents of Horrorland are going to be proud of too.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Rogers.
Mayor, I have a question. First of all, Trustee Rogers, I put in my, I put in verbal to you my suggestion for a name. Do I need to submit that to someone? Should we send a document to someone who has Phil's staff?
I think there'll be a process for that. Trustee Gray will get that where, because the feedback that we're getting, that I think there's going to be a more formal process for those of the trustees. But our committee, we couldn't, I haven't heard really anything back. I have my own thoughts and whether I can tell it, but we, it's something that would be a more formal.
Okay, another question I have is, when we brought this before the board, there was a lot of support from Glenview Park State's residents. But one in particular was one who lives right next to this piece of property. I don't know if it was the north, south, east, west, but they were in support of the park. But all they wanted us to do was be a consensus of the relationship with one end of the park to their property line. And I just want to make sure that either staff or somebody throughout this process, staff is with us.
Sure, I've spoken to the birds that are currently getting close to finishing their house just to the east or south of the property, just to be able to write on this image. And we talked through the options, kind of saying the other options where it wasn't exactly clear where it would be located in the lot. We had told the designers to try and be centrally located. It wouldn't be close to that home or a potential other home. That would be to the, to the west or north of that, because that wood is also for sale. So, you can see here that the play, the swings are on the far right. That's about 70 feet from the property line. So it's quite a distance from where that property line begins. And even on that side of the house, there's not too many windows at the front of the house. So, we think that it's considerate of the neighbors' property.
Thank you. Wasn't that, I'm not supposed to, tree somers would kind of block, right, like a buffer?
Right, so the design doesn't include any landscaping, but I think that serves as something that we would add to it.
Kind of parks, we wanted, give you guys a tree for that, for even the project.
Right.
Maybe a tree or something, you could go there and.
Right, the site can use some shades, so it kind of comes two birds with one stone.
Yeah, the environmental committee has already committed to putting a tree there.
Yes, that is correct. And we were going to wait for the fall, or like our September, maybe October planting.
Yeah, and I got to commend all of you for the diligence. I know people in that community who really will embrace that park. And I was on board for the initial portions of that, but I was very familiar with what was going on. So, I applaud everybody for their due diligence and their efforts in putting this together and making sure it got done to a very, a good result. So, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I forgot where I left off last night. So, Trustee Holtz?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Cabrio?
Aye.
Trustee Pasmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there a?
Yeah, I think I'd like to bring out my new business.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Holtz.
Thank you. So, the test after the ill emergency management act. Um, so, the, uh, the Texas Emergency Management Act grants the governor certain powers for a time period that may not be confirmed during the day. And since that initial 30-day proclamation, the legislature has one action. And there's no likelihood in the act that allows him to do a potential disaster proclamation or a initial 30 days, which he did, I may have mentioned. I personally feel that the legislature needs to be thinking about this issue. So that being said, in the event that they do not need to address the issue and the possibility of legal action, if you should extend your pass April 30th or, uh, stay at home, I would like to know what our village plans to, um, what position do we plan to take in terms of business owners who want to reopen, residents who want to go out their home life, um, physically using our park facilities, et cetera? Um, I want to know what is our intention of the board in terms of enforcing the possible extension after April 30th? Um, do we plan to, if you find there's ramifications, which we've seen, um, happen in other states? Do we plan to, um, possibly, uh, revoke, uh, levitation of licenses for business owners now that we have a business license policy? Um, I just kind of want to get a opinion of the, of the board regarding this. Um, I really don't want to wait until the next week, because that's not going to make it 13. So, I just kind of want to get a, a general consensus on what people's opinion about it in terms of, are we going to sort of take a semi approach, if not necessarily enforce? What, what, what is the opinion of the rest of the board?
Well, I can pretty much answer that. Obviously, if anyone wants to chime in, you're more than welcome. The governor's deciding what he wants to do and listening to the CDC of how they think it should go on right now. They feel that it's too early, and as I said earlier in the, in the remarks at the beginning of this, there are, uh, 378 million people in the United States alone. And right now, they have tested about 2 million of them. I don't think we're close to getting an answer, and I don't want to play God and say, it's okay, everyone get together. So, I would rather go with what the CDC said and not take a chance of us jeopardizing anyone's, uh, health or life. So, right now, I would say that the best thing to do is kind of go along with what the state says and what the CDC says, and wait until May 18th or the 25th. And he hasn't even extended anything yet, but if he does, the word is it's going to be between the 18th and the 25th. And let's see what happens in the next few weeks, because right now, all I'm hearing is the numbers are just ridiculously high of people dying and people having the COVID virus. And, and we haven't, we haven't even gotten to, got to the bottom of it and to walk up. There's that many people that should be tested first, so, anyone else have anything to say?
I would like to, Mayor, uh, Trustee Holtz, this is Trustee Gray. Um, you know, the governor and I belong to different political parties, and, um, I know that there's sometimes knee-jerk reaction to, you know, to, to go along those lines, and I'm not necessarily going to do that. Um, we don't agree on everything, but I, I say we follow the governor's, the state's mandates, their recommendations. We did that for, like I said, in my remarks when we started. Um, you know, what started the conversation about canceling the Home Fest was just on the recommendation by the governor that he, uh, he recommended that we, that municipalities throughout the state consider, uh, canceling events like that throughout the summer, just because of, you know, I'm, I'm never going to decide whether the budget's cautious. Um, the governor, again, while, while we might belong with different political parties, he's in touch with a lot more, um, experts, professionals, higher level people than I'll ever be, including the federal, uh, uh, and international levels. Um, to the mayor's point, you know, we have a lot of people in this country that have not been tested, but we've also, we've got the highest infection rate in this country and the highest death rate in this country. You know, I mean, we are supposed to lead the world, and we've got, we've eclipsed everybody else's numbers, and we've been being cautious. So, if we throw caution to the wind, or we try to go to our own drummer, I think that that would really become catastrophic, so, um, my, uh, I, I'm comfortable following the, uh, recommendations of the state and the government.
Okay, I guess that's not going to happen, because I just want to clarify something. When you say "we," do you mean Illinois, because we do not, so it's New York, nevermind it.
You never said it.
I think you guys are missing the point of my question. My question is, what is the policy of the village going to be when it comes to those citizens and business owners, and they exist, I'm just letting you know, they exist, that are going to choose to resume their normal activities, May 1st, regardless of what legislature decides to do? Do you have a deal where I'm going with it? I want to know what is going to be our policy in terms of locally enforcing what the legislature's words say? Are we as a village going to, uh, revoke business licenses? Are we going to issue, issue citations to people who are using our park facilities? Those are the questions I want to ask. What is our board policy going to be in terms of what happens starting May 1st in the event that you judge society to exempting orders?
Well, the first of all...
You know, I, yeah, it, it, yeah, I, I totally get what you're saying. I, I get asked the same with you, you know, as being a former clerk, and you've had to deal with all of these businesses, and you've been a part of, you know, the government and the policies for the past four years, and, you know, been really involved in these businesses. I'd like to know what your thoughts are on it.
I, I personally do not feel that we should enforce it at the local level. Let the state handle anything that they decide to do. I do not feel we should be enforcing anything at the local level. Work that, let that situation work out in the courts, in the event that there is a court challenge. I don't feel that we should, we should be asking, um, the sheriff to go out and arrest anyone using our park. I don't feel our code enforcement officers should be going and issuing citations, and I don't think we should threaten to revoke anyone's license. That's my personal opinion, and that's based on working with these businesses for the last five years, and also my personal opinion on the, the existing Illinois law, the Illinois Emergency Management Act, and what the test actually sells. So, that's, that's where I'm going with it.
All right, if I can chime in, this is Carlo. Um, I agree with your statement about let the state enforce it in a sense. Uh, however, I don't think any of our code enforcement or our law enforcement has enforced any kind of regulations on anybody at this point because of the stay-at-home order and the shutdown. I would suggest that I think it's still premature to try and dictate what the next move the state will make, the governor will make, because if we say April, April 30th, to me is a fictitious date. It was a hopeful date several weeks ago. So, it, to, for, for us to judge that today, I would love to see restaurants open. I mean, I, I go to the grocery stores, I went to Aldi when they had one lane this way, one lane that way, east and west, or north and south. Uh, I've been there, I've done that. I want to go into a restaurant just as much as anybody else. I'm still ordering locally almost every night. Um, I would tell you that I think it's premature for us to answer that question, my personal opinion. I think that we, I'm not a big fan of what's going on in the government, uh, both local and, uh, I'm sorry, state and federal. Uh, you know, we can bicker at each other and yell all day. At the end of the day, we have people losing their lives, and it's very serious. Um, and you know what? I want to go home to my kids every day. So, I think it's fictitious to even ponder what we're doing April 30th, because I don't think that's a real date.
Okay, so here's, here's what I can say to you, this is, and, and maybe I'm not making my point, so please bear with me here, and I apologize, I'm doing the best I can. Um, the date is not fictitious. He has an existing executive order that requires businesses, non-essential businesses, to be closed and non-essential activities, right? And that extends through April 30th, and that is a legal executive order. What is in question is, does he have the power under Illinois law to extend it past April 30th? So, my question is, in the event he does, what is our policy? And I don't think it's premature to discuss this now, because by the time we meet again, it will be until May 13th. So maybe we could, you know, decide to have emergency meetings and discuss it then. But my point is, it's not premature to have a consensus about what the policy of the village will be in terms of local enforcement, because this is a momentum that is not gaining steam nationally. It's gaining, gaining, uh, sorry, gaining steam in Illinois. And I think we have to, you know, recognize that fact and, and recognize that that may come in a later. And we, as the board, need to figure out what that policy is going to be. Because it's not a fictitious date, it, it's a date that's governed by the state. And the likelihood that he wants to extend it, at least in part of the state, is very, very good. And given the number in Illinois, um, I'm sorry, Will County, and that will part of Will County, it's very likely that he will fall into an extension of some sort. So, from my understanding, he's considering opening up, um, counties that have, you know, a lesser, um, impact by this virus than, than what is local in, in, uh, Will County and the Collin County. So, I guess that's my point. I just want to know what is our policy going to be? And I don't think it's premature, because by the time we meet again, and it's, uh, it will be mid-13th, not often a full 10 days after the expiration of the April 30th stay-at-home order.
This is Trustee Suisse. I, I don't think we can answer your question, Trustee Holtz. I think we need to just see what, it looks like the governor is going to, you know, it sounds like he may extend this to mid-May. I think at best, if we need to do an emergency meeting, maybe that's the way we go. I don't think we have an answer right now tonight. We don't.
We don't have an answer, so, and the answer to your answer is, we do not have an answer to it.
I'm trying to interrupt, the target's hard to do this on Zoom, I don't mean to interrupt, but... I would say, I, I agree with Carlo. And, and Carlo has been for this, he can't wait in Italy, you know, he's, he, they are struggling. And so, I am, you know, I, I get it, you know, I, I get pulled down to that. And then I, you, you know, I'm not allowed to go to Michigan, you know, I'm not allowed to see my parents. I mean, it is very hard. Um, I'd like to hear from Trustee Cervino, as a business owner, what his thoughts are.
Well, my thoughts are pretty simple. As a business owner, and a sheriff, and other business owners, you know, people that want to stay home should stay home, and people that, I'm sorry, um, I'm not sure how many other people on this panel own their own business, but we're struggling, we're suffering. You know, a lot of people are here, and you're still, I can't speak for everybody, but, you know, you're supposed, you're still getting checked, you know? A lot of people aren't qualifying for, for their federal grants, and, I don't know, I just think that, um, I know we mentioned not playing God, we're playing God for businesses. So, you know, we should take this into consideration. Maybe not today, but maybe it's something the council can look into, because it's going to come up. And it just seems that we keep pushing it over to the next meeting to the next meeting, we're running out of time. So, I, I just think we should be vigilant with that, and just keep that in your mind when we make decisions.
And, and, and I can see it, and I have a business to myself, and it's definitely hurting, because no one's out of the three. I'd love to have a car in the street, because I'm going to get in accidents, and I get to fixing them, and I make some money. So, it's, it's really simple, you know? Well, here, here's, here's what it is. Nobody knows what this disease is, nobody. Nobody knows who has it. Everyone in this room could have it. Have you been tested? Have you been tested? Have you been tested? Have you been tested? All right, so you've got most of the people that are in this room that haven't been tested. And the problem is, the numbers aren't really going down that much, the numbers are going up. And then deaths are happening a lot more, and they're also impacting to a lot of younger people. I mean, they had infants die, they had a four-year-old die, they had a five-year-old die. And how many other people that we really do, don't even know? We're thinking just about Illinois right now. Indiana's almost catching up to what we've got right now. So, my answer would be real simple. I'm not God. I am not anyone that has the power to say, hey, let's end this and everyone go out and party. So, I would say that it stays the way it is until the CDC says it's okay to do it. When I listen to the federal government, and you've got, uh, the people that are, that's what they do for a living, they tell you about all these diseases. And they're all saying the same thing, it's, we're not ready for it. And they say that if it comes back the second time, it's going to come back with a vengeance. Do they know that that's for sure? No, they don't, because everyone's guessing right now. So why don't we just give it a little time, let it handle out? Let's see what they do. If the governor wants to do it, let him do it. If he gets in trouble, he gets in trouble. Then they will decide down Springfield. They're not going to decide here in Harmonia.
If I, if I...
Mayor, I'd like to ask, uh, Trustee Ruben, uh, Trustee, as we know, something you just said that we, we keep putting off, um, I, I think you said, we keep putting off the voter until next time, until next time, until next time. I don't, I don't understand, what did we put off? I mean, what, what Trustee Holtz just asked us about is something that...
Well, that was a specific one, but then the other one that I was referring to, like, for example, when we were speaking for the, um, for the businesses, the packages that we're going to do, uh, we talked about having to vote the next day, and then we thought it was a good idea to keep pushing it over and over and over. So I meant as a whole, not just for the specific case.
The packages being the, our short-term bridge months, I mean, because those are progressing, and right now, we have probably a dozen or more that have been approved and, and are, are pending, right?
Right now, we're at $45,000 out.
So that's nine approved, and there are...
And we have, we have...
Right, there are pending, so, I mean, we've, we've already acted on that, and we've acted, obviously, we've, we've been trying to share our social media and...
There is no doubt that you've acted, but I'm...
No, but I'm trying to say, I, but, no, I know what you're trying to do, we missed.
It's not that, I never said you missed anything.
Well, you said, I said, when I finished, I said that we...
Excuse me?
Don't do that, please.
Don't do it.
So, wait, 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 stop it. Finish your thought and then let me...
Well, he asked me a question, he didn't let me finish my thought.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. You're asking me what I meant, we pushed over and over. It seems to me, and since we're the one in the bounds here, because, you know, I, I like taking a situation, solving it at that moment. Okay, some people like thinking it over, taking a few days, because they have that luxury. That's all I'm saying. So, I'm not sure what you were doing just now, but we're on the same team here, so don't try to turn around and stick it on me.
I'm asking you, what have we pushed off? You said we, we pushed it off time and time again.
It just, and, yeah, you have. But why? And not just this specific situation, but since the beginning, it, it, well, a few of us have been trying to get the answers now, during the meetings while we're out here. It seems that we're just like, well, let's think about it, let's talk about it, and let's push over, which is fine, it looks great. It's just, you know, forgive me for trying to fix it, not, that's all I'm saying.
I'm asking you, what have we put off?
And I, and I told you...
What should we have taken up tonight that we put off last night?
I answered that question, Mark.
No, you haven't.
Yes, I have.
What did we put off two weeks ago?
I can answer with you offline, unless you want to make a start of it now.
What should we put off two weeks ago that we shouldn't have taken up tonight?
I answered that question.
Could you tell me again? I must have forgotten.
When we talked about, uh, the loans for the businesses and enacting right away, you said that, or, you know, the board's decision was to move on and talk about it and think about it and see what happens, because it's not that bad now, and we don't know what's happening, and, you know, the, the usual stuff, that's all I'm saying. So, you don't want to act right away, that's good for you.
I did act right, we, we enacted that program four weeks ago, I believe, two weeks ago or four weeks ago. We enacted that program.
But there were certain things that I wanted decisions on that day, and most of it, and other board members wanted that same thing. But it seems like we pushed it over, and that's fine, that's your tactic, I'm doing it, that's great, don't be...
And this is your tactic, Trustee, because, I mean, there's no tactic, I want it, I want it, I want it done now.
Final order, period.
Knock it off. We're supposed to be working together, not against each, against each other.
You're right.
It's real simple here. We're looking out for mine residents, for your residents, for your residents, nobody else. That's what we're looking out for. Business-wise, I understand it, I'm in the same position, everybody else is. So, as, I would love to be able to be vocal with others. They don't want to do it because they're saying it's not time to do it yet. And, and I understand, and...
Mayor, I agree with you. He brought it up, and he wanted to hit it on the head, so I just answered him, so I...
Now, let me finish, and then, sorry, let me finish. Let me finish, so...
Point of order, point of order. The trustees have a right to speak and vent their thought and not be silenced by your gamble.
Well, you're out of order right now, so I will continue, because I do have the power, because I am the mayor. All we're trying to do is make what's best for you, that's all we're trying to do. And what she's trying to do right now, is she's...
I'm agreeing with you, I was just responding to his direct question to me. I agree with exactly everything you said, and there's a few things I didn't agree with, I kept my mouth shut with, because I want to play ball, okay? So, trust me, if there's anybody here that wants to get stuff done, it's me.
No, I think everyone wants to get something done, but we have to do it when we can do it. And, and when you decide to run for something in Springfield and you have the power, knock your socks off, you do whatever you want. But what you're asking us to do, we can't, and we won't, and I need a motion to adjourn.
I see.
Second.
On my favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.